Go ahead and call the Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here. We have a great audience here today, so I want to welcome everyone here. And we'll go ahead and move to our invocation and pledge, and I'll ask Commissioner Tyson to lead us in both.
All right. Everybody can stand.
Dear gracious and heavenly Father, we praise and thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity for us to gather together to do the work of the people of Cumberland County. We pray that you would be here in this meeting, that you will help to guide and inform our decisions as we move the people's business forward. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we move into our recognitions, we've got a couple birthdays, two staff birthdays. So our Assistant County Manager Heather Skeens has a birthday coming up, and our county manager, Clarence Curry, has a birthday coming up as well. So just want to wish them both happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Commissioner Adams enters the room. We'll go ahead and move to recognitions. First, we have several recognitions tonight. The first recognition, we'd like to have DSS for Social Work Simulation Training Program Awards. If I could call DSS Director Brenda Jackson forward. And would you like to read, or would you like me to read?
You can read.
I mean, I'm more than happy to let you read. So the North Carolina Association of County Directors of Social Services presented Cumberland County Department of Social Services the twenty-second Annual Innovation Award for External and/or Non-Traditional Partnership Category for Large-Sized Counties during the annual Social Services Institute Luncheon held on August seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, in Hickory, North Carolina. Cumberland County DSS also received the North Carolina Association of Cumberland County Commissioners, of County Commissioners Civic Excellence and Innovation Award. This award was presented at the NCACC hundred-and-eighteenth Annual Conference in Pitt County, North Carolina, on August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Both awards were presented to the Cumberland County Department of Social Services for the Social Work Simulation Training Program. The award recognized, sorry, I think I already said that. The training program is a partnership with the University of Utah implementing cost-effective, real-world, virtual social work training to support staff for critical child and adult protective social work duties in the community. And we have two people to be recognized.
Yeah, so, good evening, Commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Devier, for that gracious introduction of the award. We're really proud at Cumberland County Social Services that we are the largest employer of social workers in the county. We hire almost two hundred and fifty social workers that perform services for child protective services, foster care, adoptions, elder services, work-first employment programs, and we are so excited about the work that they do. Every day, they work in the community on behalf of our citizens to protect vulnerable children and adults. And when you look at trying to train a social worker, we have two great, excellent schools of social work here, one at Fayetteville State and one at Methodist University. However, those social workers still need those core training that they receive in the field. This is Haika Hammer, and she is our Division Director for Performance Management, and she's over quality assurance, social work training, and business intelligence. She came to me last year and said, Brenda, we need to have those goggles that they use to make sure that social workers understand when they go into a home, where to park, how to be safe, how to do assessment, how to assess children. They really need that real-world experience. But it was cost prohibitive. I think it was like three hundred thousand dollars for that program. I want to commend Haika because she went out on her own and did the research and found the research that the University of Utah was doing around social work training. And in exchange for the research and the data that our social workers are using their technology, they are able to then use that training to provide best-practice training for social workers across the nation. And she did that for no cost to the county.
Wow.
And so every time we get this award as a department, I just hand it to her and say, this is your award. So we're so thankful for the North Carolina Association of County Directors Associate, the Social Services, and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for recognizing this wonderful innovation. And to Haika, thank you, thank you, thank you. You are going to make a difference in the lives of families because we're able to train social workers to do real work in the community with real, live experience. So thank you.
Thank you. County Manager, did you have any additional comments?
Thank you for the recognition and making, and putting Cumberland County on the map, nationally and locally.
And I'll go ahead and ask Vice Sherman Jones to meet at the podium so we could get a picture real quick. We're going to meet down at the podium, and hand you your award. Awards.
Mr. Chairman, as we're doing that, I will say that they also did a video, our Director, Brenda Jackson, for that civic award, and it was excellent. She did an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams.
And I would like to also say, being on the Social Service Board, it's definitely been an honor and privilege to be able to know you. You always give excellent, detailed reports, and definitely with the many questions that I'm always asking, you are definitely, no doubt, a contribution and definitely someone that makes the team even greater. So again, overall team, we will do the best we can. Thank you all for all the work that you do for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, and thank you, Ms. Hammer. We'll go ahead and move now to recognition for our Cumberland County 4-H. I would ask Ms. Lisa Childers and Assistant County Manager Faith Phillips to come forward to the podium. I'm going to play the same game with y'all. Am I recognizing, or am I reading, or are y'all? Faith, you're a, I'm sorry, Assistant County Manager Phillips, you're a librarian, so you're, you know, by trade, so.
Absolutely, Chairman. So, good evening, Chairman, good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
We are happy to be here today to recognize several members of our 4-H family, I guess I could say it that way, for their outstanding service to our community and the way they have represented us. First, do we want to pause? Do we want to bring up each person after I say a little bit about them?
Sure.
Okay. So first, we would like to recognize Serena Galtman. She is the two thousand and twenty-five 4-H Youth Voice Delegate. So Serena represented Cumberland County, and she attends Jagbrick High School, and recently participated in the NC Association of County Commissioners Annual Meeting in Pitt County as the 4-H Youth Voice Delegate. Serena would like to take a few moments to share a few remarks about her experience at Youth Voice, and she wants to go to Duke, which is fantastic.
Hold on, we're not, we're not going to have com, no, I'm just kidding.
Hello, my name is Serena Gotem. Yes, I'm a student at Jagbrick High School, and it's truly an honor to be here, to be recognized by you all. So during my time, like, serving as Cumberland County Delegate during this year's 4-H program, 4-H Youth Voice Program, I learned so many things. So we went through several activities such as the UNC's Bottom Line Simulation and the Real Colors Leadership Style. And through that, I learned so many things, like, I gained such, like, a positive impact on, like, I'm so sorry. I gained, I realized just, like, how important the local government is, like, what they do. And it also really helped me to, like, work on my leadership skills, to, like, enhance my already current skills, and to connect with, like, ventures that I'm already passionate about. And I truly want to thank 4-H, yes, they gave me this amazing opportunity, and you all as well. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you'll just stay up here, we're going to get a group picture afterwards, and I'll let Assistant County Manager Phillips continue.
Right. So next, we are honored to be able to recognize Ms. Eleanor Getz. She is the recipient of the Dr. Kim in Gold Hands-to-Larger Service 4-H Award. So she has dedicated more than fifty years of service.
Right? Fifty years of service.
To 4-H at the local, district, state, and national levels. And she is leaving an extraordinary legacy of leadership and commitment. So we just wanted to take a moment and to honor you. I know you have members of your family with you today. We want to honor you and all the contributions you have made to our 4-H community and all the people you have impacted along the way. So thank you so much. And we have a few items to recognize.
And just, I will add that many of our 4-H, or 4-H kids call her mom. She's known by mom.
And this plaque is actually to Eleanor Mom. Yes.
And Ms. Getz, if you'll stay close, we're going to get a group picture. So Mom, please stay right there.
And last, but certainly, certainly not least, we would like to recognize Alfreda Williams as the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five State 4-H Volunteer Leaders Association President. So Alfreda brings more than twenty years of dedicated service as a 4-H volunteer, and over the years, she has served in many roles during her term as President of the State 4-H Volunteer Leaders Association. She has provided training for leaders across North Carolina. She has played a vital role in planning and guiding this year's statewide 4-H Volunteer Leaders Association Conference. Ms. Williams, we appreciate you, all that you have done for our community and the way that you represent us, not only here in Cumberland County, but across the state. Thank you for all that you do.
And I'd ask Commissioner Tyson to meet at the podium and give any comments, and get ready for the group picture. Want any comment? Go ahead.
Thank y'all so much for what y'all do in the community and for your years of service that you've done for 4-H. It holds a special place in my heart, coming from an agricultural family, so thank y'all so much, and really appreciate being able to celebrate with y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We've got a couple more. So we have an employee recognition. We have a, and I will let everybody get settled back in before I continue. Take your time, Mom. All right, so we have a retirement, and I would ask the county manager come up, Ms. Tammy Fuller.
I'm going to turn this over to Faith Phillips, Assistant County Manager, since she was former library director. Be more appropriate for her to take over this one.
Ms. Fuller, if you'll come up.
So, good evening again, Commissioners and Chairman. It gives me a great honor this evening to recognize Tammy Fuller for her outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County in her retirement from, she served us from July twenty-third of two thousand and seven to April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five. She served faithfully in our library system, and I knew her in our children's department at our Clifftown Regional Library, helping hold things down and just providing good storytimes and service to the kids there. So, thank you, Tammy. You look fantastic in retirement, but we miss you.
And before you get the picture, I ask Commissioner Adams to come down to the podium and make any comments as a liaison.
I will tell you that I raised her. She grew up in my church. Her family's been in my church forever and ever, and she and her husband had a church, and they were pastors, and led this community well, and we're going to miss you. The library's going to miss you, but thank you so very much. I asked the family to stand up, because they're all here.
Say, make sure we get a picture of that family now. Commissioner Adams, even Faith Phillips now. Congratulations, Ms. Fuller, enjoy your retirement. And thank you, family, for taking the time to come out tonight. We have just a couple more. We have a congratulations, and I will recognize Vice Sherman Jones to make this, to make this congratulatory.
I'll be coming down to present to Dr. Tariqa Fuller, and we also have Dr. Green here, since she does work as a provider, advanced provider too, for the Health Department. So I'll come to the podium and tell you all something about our fabulous, congratulations.
We are very proud to celebrate her election. Again, Dr. Tariqa T. Fuller, she has a lot of initials behind her last name, DNP, MSN, FNP-bc, FNP-c, for all of those that are in medical, they know what that stands for, WHNP, BC, CDP, CGRN, CBN, and also NRCME. We are delighted that she has been elected to serve as the Chair of the North Carolina Nurses Association Commission of Advanced Practice Nursing for the year term of two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-seven. And I would like to tell you all information about Dr. Tariqa Fuller. She is a highly accomplished and board-certified family nurse practitioner, which is what the FMP stands for, women's health nurse practitioner, WHNP, based in Rayford, North Carolina. Dr. Fuller earned her Bachelors of Science in Nursing and Doctors of Nursing Practitioner from East Carolina University. She completed her Master's in Science and Nursing, and her post-Master's FNP certified at Indiana Westling University, and her post-certification in Women's Health at Frontier Nursing University. April two thousand and twenty-three, Dr. Fuller joined FNU at the Family Nurse Practitioner, Clinical Transitioning Coordinating Course Coordinator, and led several course facilities. She actively supports inclusive education as the two thousand and twenty-four Inclusive Facility Volunteer for the President's Cabinet. She is a two thousand and twenty-four FNU Diversity, Equality, and Inclusion DEI Fellow. Dr. Fuller is also a two thousand and twenty-five AACN Access Connections and Engagement Institute Fellow. In her two thousand and twenty-five, she was selected for FNU's inaugural Presidential Academic Fellowship Program. She has developed the Dr. Fuller, Tariqa Fuller Leadership and Empowerment Scholarship in partnership with FNU, which is Frontier Nursing University, supports students pursuing women's health nurse practitioner, of family nurse practitioner degrees, and she also has experience as a clinician and educator. Dr. Fuller is passionate about ensuring that all communities receive culture company care. She also developed a scholarship with the DMPs of color that is given a student pursuing their DMPs. Therefore, that's one of just many of her resumes, so you all will know that definitely they selected the right person. I'm very privileged to also say that she is the First Lady of Beauty Spot Missionary Baptist Church under the leadership of Tequon Fuller, her husband, of which is my church family. So we are very proud of her at Beauty Spot, as well as the county. It's a pleasure to be able to present this to her today. I will be presenting two of the coins prestigious, Kirk Devier, our chairman's coin for leadership and excellence, as well as that of appreciation coin for the Cumberland County coin that we want to also present, that is that for those that go beyond and above, because she serves for our county, and we know how hard our providers, our doctors, and our nurses work, but also that of when you're making extra additional time to serve for your state and your county. I would at this time like for Dr. Tariqa Fuller to come to the podium, as well as our Director, Ms. Green at this time. And if we have any providers that serve in our nurse association, could they serve at this time? Again, we know that you all do a lot, and then I will just allow Dr. Green and yourself to have a few moments to speak.
Good evening.
You can pull it up. You can pull it up.
Thank you so much. I am honored to receive this recognition, and I will say that I started working for Cumberland County in two thousand and fifteen. So this month, I will be celebrating ten years as an advanced practice provider, serving the communities of Cumberland County. So I'm excited to be here on tonight, and I just want to let you know that leadership is never about one person, but it's about the collaboration in service, the willingness to work together for the good of our community. I am grateful for the opportunities I have had to serve, grow, and stand alongside so many designated individuals who care deeply about Cumberland County. This coin is not just a symbol of leadership, but a reminder of responsibility, responsibility to continue to strive for excellence, to uplift others, and to leave a lasting impact in the lives we touch. Thank you again for this honor, and I accept it with gratitude, humility, and renewed commitment to serve.
Well, Commissioners, I just want to say, you know, Dr. Fuller has been a provider with us since I've been here, and has, she's been an excellent addition to our team. She helped lead us, lead the way through COVID. She's always more than willing to do outreach events with us. She was out there doing some naloxone distribution a couple weeks ago, out doing our STD testing, out in the community, and so we're grateful to have her as a part of our, of team, and congratulations on your election.
And we have, Vice Chairman, if you'll just stay up there, we have one more. So we've previously approved a proclamation and just wanted to present it tonight in recognition of National Voter Registration Day. So Vice Chairman, if you'll read that proclamation and bring... So Vice Chairman, if you'll read that proclamation and bring up the organization.
Yes, I will. If I could please have Dr. Lindora Thompson to please join me at the podium at this time. She serves as the Southern Regional Organizer for Democracy North Carolina. And at this time, I will read your proclamation, and you can just give us a few words. Whereas, as part of their submission, Democracy North Carolina is leading efforts across the state to engage and equip nonprofit organizations on advancing voter registration and education initiatives. And whereas Democracy North Carolina will serve as the lead partner in coordinating these efforts in celebration of National Voter Registration Day on September 16, 2025. Whereas National Voter Registration Day is a nonpartisan civic holiday dedicated to celebrating our democracy. Since its kickoff in 2012, the holiday and its team of thousands of partners have worked to get over 6 million Americans registered to vote in time for their next trip to the ballot box. And whereas celebrated each September, National Voter Registration Day involves dedicated partners from all over the nation highlighting the essential role of civic participation in strengthening our democracy and ensuring that every eligible voice and voter is heard. Now therefore, we, the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize Democracy North Carolina and proclaim September 16, 2025 as National Voters Registration Day, and Cumberland County adopted this 11th day of September 2025. And this is signed by Kirk J. Deviere. He is the Chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. So we want to thank you for your service and your overall team. And I will present this to you and give you a few moments to say a few words.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
On behalf of Democracy North Carolina, thank you for this honor and for recognizing National Voter Registration Day on September 16, 2025. This proclamation reminds us that our democracy is strongest when everyone has a voice. I encourage each of you to check your status and get registered, and bring a friend or a neighbor with you. And don't wait, do it on September 16. Together, we can make sure every voice in Cumberland County is heard and every vote counts. Again, thank you, commissioners, for this honor.
Thank you. Commissioners, we'll go ahead and now move to the public comment period. I'd ask County Manager Greer to read the public comment policy.
Yes, the public comment period procedures always follows. The public comment periods will last no longer than 15 minutes. Time may be extended at the discretion of the Board. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the 15-minute limit is attained. No time may be yielded by a speaker to another speaker. Speakers will be acknowledged by the Board in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the Board from the later and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers will not discuss matters regarding the candidacy of persons seeking public office. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. And written comments and/or supporting documents may be left with the clerk to the Board.
Thank you, County Manager. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment speakers tonight?
We have six speakers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and give each one of them their full three-minute time limit. And we'll go ahead and call on the first speaker, Madam Clerk.
Modesto Escalarra. Modesto Escalarra.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the next speaker.
Robert Walls. Robert Walls.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the next speaker.
Ron Ross.
Ron Ross, you know my address too?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I got an address, 6542 Celestial Pine Drive, Hope Mills, North Carolina, 28348. First of all, I want to thank you for having me here today. And the reason I'm here is, well, I was born right down the street. If you know where City Hall is, it was hospital in 1950. Lived on B Street for 13 years, East Russell Street for another four. So I grew up downtown until I was 17. So when you do things, they do things in the city and the county does things. I like it. I know you've got money, some money already tied up in this project. The event center site and what to do with it. Mr. Deviere, you had that form. I'm not very good at filling out forms. I appreciate it though, I think it was a good idea. I know there's plans to build an African-American museum somewhere on Person Street. Why this can't be relocated to the event center? Why can't this be relocated to the event center? A 44,000 square foot, approximately two acres, state-of-the-art African-American museum costs approximately $20 million. The remaining property could be used for parking spaces. The funds for this project should begin, I know you don't got money tied up in it, but the funds for this project should begin with public and private contributions. Now, you may say, well, public and private contributions. The Maiden Lane Library was turned down by the voters, and public and private contributions built the library, and then it was turned over to the county. So can it be done? Yes, it can be done. Now, after the, after the funds are raised through private and public donations, then I think the city and the county should step in for the remaining balance. But you, see, we've got a baseball stadium, we've got a transportation museum. But I think a state-of-the-art African-American museum on that main street out there with the remaining parking spaces facing the courthouse would be perfect. I think it'd be growth for our city, growth for our county. And again, I keep using the word state-of-the-art. It should be comparable to the Airborne Museum. If you walk into the Airborne Museum, you're blown away. They change it from time to time, and I think that it attracts people to go in there. So for me personally, I'm saying that to y'all and to any voters that are listening or who live in the city and the county, I want you to pay clear and close attention that we should need something downtown along those lines. And I appreciate the work y'all are doing too, I really do. I mean, I think y'all are working good together. I'm very proud to know all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Terri Thomas.
Terri Thomas, 508 Spalding Street. I know I'm normally here advocating for the blind. I'm here to actually thank each and every one of you for giving to the VRC. With your help, we were able to hire two people today that will be coming to help the capacity of the VRC. So thank you for blessing us in that way. So many people do not understand how much capacity means to a small nonprofit. There are people in here that didn't understand why you gave to us. But it is so immensely important to so many people that are blind and visually impaired to just have the opportunity to be better or to be great. So we have two very infectious people with personalities that did not need a whole lot of money, but just want to make a difference in community, just like me, that are coming on board today, that are here to do the work. So we are not going to let you down. We're going to make you very proud. Watch us shine. So we are so thankful, so we're not here to pound the streets, but to thank each and every one of you for taking a chance on us and letting the world know in the county that the county commissioners get it and to help small nonprofits like us to make a difference in this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Giovanna Gordon.
Giovanna Gordon, 709 Rockwood Drive. I'm part of the VRC, and I just wanted to back up what Terri said. I'm visually impaired, and without the VRC, my life wouldn't be what it is today. It changed my life. So I wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you that you can help a person, a person like me, to fulfill my dreams. And, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
And to recognize somebody as special as Terri in what she does for people like me at the Vision Resource Center. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
All I have is the name Ed.
Madam Clerk, I'm assuming that's the last speaker?
That is the last speaker.
All right, we will go ahead and close the public comment period. Appreciate everyone's comments tonight. And we'll move to approval of the agenda. A call on the county manager for any changes to the agenda.
No changes to the agenda, Chairman Deviere.
Hearing no changes, I entertain a motion, Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. It's been seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll entertain your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item two, consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Yes, if we could remove 2K, Mr. Chairman.
2K.
Approval of an update to personnel policy, 71084. That's what I'm seeing here online.
What letter is it?
I'm looking on the, what's it called? It says K.
Oh, K, I thought you said K2.
No, 2K. I'm sorry.
Okay, gotcha. Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
This is unusual, but I'd like to add something to the consent agenda, please. Item 4A. Inasmuch as I was the lone dissenting vote, can I move that to a unanimous vote and just put that on the consent agenda? If that's appropriate. If not, y'all want to hear it again, go ahead.
We'll move that to the consent agenda.
That's fine.
I see Dr. Green over there smiling.
Madam Clerk, I just want to make sure that the record reflects the motion that was made for that item in the agenda session, because it's different than what was in the agenda package.
Correct, I will update.
It's adding the quarterly report and the data. Quarterly report to the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Health. Commissioners, anything else to remove or add to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion, Vice Chairman Jones.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the amended changes as requested by Commissioner Faircloth.
Second the motion. And Commissioner Adams.
And Commissioner Adams, thank you for that reminder.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
All right, we will go ahead and move to item three, public hearings. County Manager Greer, if you'll read the board rules and procedures.
Yes, public hearing procedures. Arguments by the proponents and opponents should be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes per each side. If there's no group representative, each speaker should be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the 10-minute time period is attained. Rebutts will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman for a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side. We currently have one public hearing. Section 5311 grant application for approval for the fiscal, approval for the submission for fiscal year 2027, application for the Community Transportation Program. Ross Howard, Director of Planning and Inspections, will present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Graham couldn't make it here this evening, so I'll be presenting in his stead. So this item that's before you this evening is, every year, the Community Transportation Program that I think that many of you know provides transportation services for targeted and vulnerable populations within our county to be able to get around for certain specific tasks. They have to apply for grant funds that are essentially just the operational funds for that program every single year through NCDOT. So there's a portfolio of grant applications that encompass everything that goes into what that program has to use in order to be able to run. These include grants 5307, 5310, 5311, and what we call rope grant funds. So what you have for you this evening is that we are looking ahead. So the program always looks a year ahead, so we're already looking into FY27. So we have to, you know, start making that application now. And so the deadline for those applications are October 3rd. Yes, I have Ms. Crawford here, who's the program manager here. So I would like to recognize her as well if there's any other follow-up questions. So essentially, the requirements from the state is that we have to have a public hearing for the application for the 5311 funds. To make this as streamlined as possible for all grant funds, we just put it out there that, we just presented to the Board, as we're doing tonight, to request that the Board approve the county manager sign off on the application for those funds for the FY27 year. So as required, we have to have a public hearing just for 5311, but we're wrapping all of them together in this effort.
Commissioners, any questions on this before I open the public hearing? Hearing, Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I do, I just, and maybe you can tell me. So we have a public hearing about this. Did we send notice out to, besides just putting it on to? Is she sticking it here? Yes, okay.
Yeah, we put a legal out in the paper the Sunday before last Sunday.
I just think it's important for people to know that it was out there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams.
Thank you.
Any other comments, commissioners, questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Are there any other questions or discussions on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
I make a motion to move to approve the authorization for the county manager to approve submission of FY27 Community Transportation Program, Section 5307, also 5310 and 5311, ROP, grant applications to the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
Second the motion. We have a motion to approve the authorization, the grant application and approval of submission. It's been seconded. Are there any discussions or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you. And we will go ahead and move to item B of the public hearings, and that is Case Z0N25-0030. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I will need to recuse myself from Case Z0N250030 due to a conflict of interest.
Madam Clerk, please make sure the records reflect that recusal, and I'll ask the county manager to present this item.
Yes, I would turn this over to Ross Howard, Director of Planning and Inspections. And he will also present item C and D. Ross?
Thank you very much, Mr. County Manager. As stated, this is Case Z0N25-0030. Give you a little bit of background of where this is on the location map, once it pulls up. We're having some technical difficulties.
You've got three minutes.
Sorry for that. So as stated, this is Case Z0N25-0030. This case is located in the southwestern part of the county as indicated by the red star on the map near in between the city of Fayetteville and Pope Mills, as you can see. The applicant and the owner is Sharon Koontz, Peggy Koontz, Tana Hutton, Charles Koontz, and Connie Koontz. The agent is Kimberly Bozeman with Mr. Thomas Neville, who was serving as the agent for the request. The request itself is to go from R6A Residential to C2P Plan Service and Retail. For those of you that don't know, C2P is our more moderate commercial designation. It's not our heaviest, it's not our largest, it's in the middle. Generally serving a lot of neighborhood types of services for a particular area. But you can see highlighted in red. area going to a commercial development, especially given some of the plans which I'll show you here in about two slides. This is an aerial of the site itself. You can see here's a mix of mobile homes currently on the property, well, for the large part, that's what's on the property, all of the property. When you look at the zoning itself, as I said, it's a transitioning area. You have some R6A out there, but you also have some CP for the town of Hope Mills, and some general commercial development at the hard corner. So when I said that there were going to be some plans that are planned for this particular intersection, we did actually get with DOT to pull some of what those plans are, and I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of what those are. So this is the intersection proper, but you can see there's going to be multi-lane shifting and changing. This is the property that we're currently talking about right now, but the roads and the right-ofways are currently planned to take off the hard corner of that property or come right there at it, in preparation of a lot of the changes that you're going to see, trying to be able to strengthen that intersection for traffic and for future commercial Looking at the site itself for utilities, there are no hydro or hydro conclusion soils, there is a water line directly adjacent to the property, and there is sewer that is adjacent, that is my understanding, the applicant plans to extend once it's sold for commercial development if approved. Looking at a topo map, these are two-foot, I'm sorry, yeah, two-foot contours. This site sits right, pretty much as flat as you can get, so it's a good piece of property for development. When staff looked at this against the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, which was adopted in 2013, they called for this to be mixed-use, which contemplates a mix of commercial development and creating an atmosphere that supports existing and future commercial activities, and also trying to be able to make sure that any type of commercial activities that are planned for an area should be in harmony with the surrounding area, especially when you're dealing with some residential. So given all that, staff felt that the request was consistent with the adopted land use plan. So this is standing on Camden Road, you can see with the highlighted arrow, just looking at the property. This is the west view of the property, looking down Camden Road, with the site immediately on the left-hand side, and of course, you see the public notification sign required for state statute. This is looking across the street. We did take some pictures, I'm sorry, this is the east view on Camden Road, but we did take some pictures with the site immediately on the right-hand side. We did take some pictures on the Rockfish roadside as well, too. So this is standing on Rockfish Road, looking directly at the site. As I stated before, there is a mix of some manufactured housing that's out there. This is the west view, with the site immediately on the right-hand side. This is looking towards that future intersection that I was just talking about. This is the south view on Rockfish Road, looking across the street. This is the east view, with the site immediately on the left-hand side. So staff does recommend approval of the request, and we took this to the August Planning Board meeting, they also supported staff's recommendation by an eight-to-zero vote. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Commissioners, any questions before we go to the public hearing? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Thank you. Ross, so just to make sure I'm clear on this, this is two parcels.
Correct.
Are they combining the two, have they been combined, or are we doing each one of the parcels into, are we doing two separate things, or if they're separate parcels?
This is one rezoning, that would be over two parcels. If the applicant comes in and wants to be able to build on that second, then typically what we would do is we would make them recombine for the portion that they want to build on. We don't have a requirement that they do a recombination for zoning.
Commissioner Adams, anything else?
Not right now, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions before we go to the public hearing? None, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have one speaker, Thomas Neville.
Good evening, Thomas Neville.
Good evening.
I really don't have anything to add, and after hearing the award, presentations, and recipients, I feel very unimportant. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but Mr. Howard did find you all presenting.
Madam Clerk, are there any other?
There are no other speakers.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and Commissioners, are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I just want to make, so there is no water to this property?
There's, no, sir, there's water, but there's no sewer. I wouldn't say there's no sewer, there's sewer that is just across the street. If you look here, there's a water line that runs down Camden and Rockfish in the blue, and then the brown, if you look right here, there's a sewer line here as well.
So that, and that water line, you need to talk to Hope Mills about annexation or whatever to be able to run that, is it coming out of Hope Mills?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
So it's their water line?
Mm-hmm.
So did we have any kind of communications with Hope Mills as to this rezoning?
We did, I think we did reach out to them. Yeah, so I think we did reach out to them, but I don't think there was an, I don't think there was an indication that they would annex and then go in as a rezoning underneath their process. So the applicant had desire to go underneath the county process.
Commissioner Adams, anything else? Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, Commissioner Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Howard. At this time, in case Z0N25-0030, I will make a motion to approve the rezoning request from R6A Residential District to C2P Plan Service and Retail District. The board finds that the request is consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, which calls for mixed-use at this location. The request is reasonable and in the public interest as it's compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion to approve the rezoning request from R6A to C2P, it's been properly seconded. Any further discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Vice Chairman Jones, Chairman Devier, Commissioner Patel, Commissioner Faircloth, and Commissioner Adams, recusing is Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, and we'll go ahead and move to item C, case Z0N25-0031. Mr. Howard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, this is case Z0N25-0031. As you can see by the highlighted star, this is located in the furthest northeastern part of the county, up near the town of Godwin. This is the subject site, you can see here, the applicant is Timothy and Troy Buckholz, there is no agent. The request is to go from A1CZ Agricultural Conditional Zoning to A1A Agriculture, which is a straight district, for the intent to put a residential home. So this is a conditional district, so I just will point out that the condition is basically that it's limited to a commercial operation, I believe it currently it's a restaurant or an old restaurant that's there that they want to put back into a house. So this is Dunn Road, as you can see here, and then when we get to the map, you're probably familiar with this area, that's Rhodes Pond. So this site sits right behind Rhodes Pond, and you can see pretty much around it is, you have a manufactured home site and a single-family residential across the street, but for the most part, it's a lot of wooded land and agricultural land in the area. This is the zoning. You can see A1 is predominantly the zoning district out there, you do have some conservation that sits here across the street, and then you have an R40 designation just pretty much right next to it to the west. This is the site itself, pretty straightforward. There is a water line out in this particular area, but there is no sewer. There is small presence of hydro soils on the furthest eastern side in that little panhandle area of the property that you can see here, but for the most part, the site itself has got fairly good soils. In the Vision Northeast Land Use Plan, which was adopted in 2010, they called for open space, so a lot of this area dealing with Rhodes Pond was calling for open space at that particular time. So we felt that the, that the, if you look at the open space development goals, you can see that the, it says to protect and maintain, preserve, like the natural areas planned and designed, future residential development, to protect those natural features and to locate residential development in areas with compatible land uses. We felt as though that given some of the development goals, that the plan was consistent, however, we did make sure that the, to change the map, that your motion, if you decide to approve this, is a three-part motion which would simply just change the map. This is the subject property, again. This is the east view, looking down Dunn Road, with the site immediately on the left-hand side. This is the south view, looking south across the street. Again, as I mentioned before, there's a single-family home across the street. And this is the west view, looking in Dunn Road, with the, you can see the zoning sign which was required for the public notification is present on the site. So staff does recommend approval of the request, when we took this to the planning board in August, they also supported that request by an eight-to-zero vote. I'll try to answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, questions on this case? Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
Ross, why A1A and not A1?
They have an acre.
Okay, they don't have the two acres.
They don't have the two acres, that's correct.
I get it, I should have picked that up, thank you.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Just make sure, we're not changing the whole map, just for this parcel?
Correct.
Okay. Kind of like you said, change the whole map, but okay.
Commissioners, any other questions on this item before we move to the public hearing? At this time, we'll go ahead and move to the public hearing, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have one speaker, Tim Buckholz.
I don't need to speak, that was just in case of any requirement.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that was the only speaker?
That is the only speaker.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, entertain any other questions or discussions on this case? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Director Howard. In case Z0N25-0031, I move to approve the rezoning request from A1ZZC Agricultural District Conditional Zoning to A1A Agricultural District, and find that, one, approval is amendment to the adopted current Vision Northeast Land Use Plan, and that the board should not require any additional requests or application for amendment to said map for this request. Two, the requested district is more complementary with the planned policies by proposing uses that are less intense than the current use allowed on the property. Three, the proposed district allows residential uses that are commonly found in the immediate area. The board finds that this request is reasonable and in public interest as it is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Second. We have a motion to approve the rezoning request from A1CZ to A1A, it's been properly seconded. Are there any discussions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. One more, Mr. Howard, we'll move to item D. We'll move to item D, case Z0N25-0032.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Case Z0N25-0032, you can see by the highlighted star, this is down in the Grays Creek area, pretty much centered right in the southeastern area part of the county, right off just west of I-87. The applicant is Edward Clement, the request is to go from A1 Agricultural to RR Rural Residential, the intent is to put a, do a group development or two dwelling units on a piece of property that's just a little under an acre, .92 acres. You can see here, this is Grays Creek Church Road. This is not labeled, but this is the Smoky Canyon Road here, and this is Jacamp Road here that runs north and south. So this little parcel that sits right here, and this is, in this neighborhood, is, which is crosshatched in the red, is the subject of the zoning, is the subject of the zoning request tonight. When you look at the immediate area, there's a mix of single-family and manufactured homes, largely homes that are just on their own lots. When you look at the zoning map, this is largely an A1 area, yeah, an A1 area, there is some R40 that's just right up the road, this huge swath right here in the corner or the curve of the road, but for the most part, it's largely going to be A1. This is the subject properties, currently see, there's, it's a single home on a single lot, which is the character of what you see pretty much of the entire street that it's on here, and then going down Jacamp as well. This is in the Grays Creek Water and Sewer District, so there's no water or sewer for this particular area, but there are no presence of hydro or hydro conclusion soils. This is a topo map of the site itself, you can see that it's relatively fat, so there's no issues with topography currently. When we look at this particular area, as staff, this does fall within the South Central Area Land Use Plan, which was adopted in 2015, which calls for this to be farmland. There's some various goals that are associated with that. It says, any residential development greater than two acres, two units per acre must have public or private water and sewer. There's a goal of preserving and protecting farmland, and it should be limited in character with the farming community or at least the designated farmland area. When staff looked at this, we felt it was not compliant with the land use plan. Generally, the character of that neighborhood, staff felt, was largely, as I said before, a single home on a single lot. To put a second home on there, I think would probably put it out of character for what you have currently existing out there, and then there's some limitations that we probably feel with any further development. Not saying that's impossible, but it's just something that we were concerned about. This is the subject property, currently, as you can see here, this is standing on the primary road. This is on Smoky Canyon Drive, looking west, with the site immediately on the left-hand side, you can see the public notification sign here that's required by state statute. This is the north view, looking across the street. And then this is the east view, with the site immediately on the right-hand side. Staff does recommend denial of the request. When we took this to the planning board, there was some discussion about this, and the planning board ultimately also supported staff's recommendation of denial by an eight-to-zero vote. So if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to try to answer what I can.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I reviewed the planning board's meeting minutes, there was a lot of discussion about the data plate and whether or not he knew the age of the mobile home that he was planning to move onto the property. Talk a little bit to the board about the importance of that or the not-an-importance of that, and why that's a factor.
Well, generally, governments can't really regulate age of homes. If it's older than, I believe, 1976, there are certain standards that put it out of compliance with what's conventionally deemed to be a certified HUD manufactured home. Anything prior to 1976, again, I think was the year, is considered to be a mobile home, and they didn't really have a lot of standards at that particular time for construction. After that date, then, any kind of like home that comes out that's a manufactured home and has a HUD certification or some sort of a certification that's built to a minimum standard, I think that's, I think that's where the concern was deriving from.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, follow up.
So there was some discussion about whether or not the owner would be able to locate the data plates to give a representation of the year it was built. Were they able to locate that and provide it to your office?
We, no, sir, we got no indication from the applicant about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Howard, I recall from the planning meeting, and just for the rest of the board, too, and some clarification, looking at what the applicant is trying to accomplish by adding another unit on the site, with its current ordinance, would subdivision of the lot be applicable?
You mean under RR?
Under its current zoning ordinance?
No, it would not.
And the conform, it would not be able to?
Yeah. I think that's the reason why you go for the RR, which allows 20,000 square foot lot sizes, and since it's a little bit under an acre right now, if you do the calculation of .2 to acres, it comes out that the lot itself is just a little over 40,000 square feet right now. So if it got rezoned to RR, then you could, technically, you could subdivide it, but there's some limitations, as I said before. This is a, this was plotted as a Class C street, back in the day, you could have up to eight lots on a Class C street, there's seven on there right now. So if you were to, say, for example, split the lot in this fashion and then put a lot here, I think it would, you wouldn't be able to do it just because of the limitations of the street classification without upgrading the entire street for fire and EM, you know, like servicing of that. Subdividing it in a vertical fashion here, I think, would be very limited just due to the fact you've got a home sitting there right now, you know what I mean? And so there would be some significant moving around, and I'm assuming there's some septic issues that would be involved in that. I think what the applicant has indicated is do a group development, which will allow you to put two homes on one lot without subdivision, you could do that as well, too.
Commissioner Patel, anything else?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
So, Ross, so is
of the street classification, without upgrading the entire street for fire and EM, you know, like servicing of that. Subdividing it in a vertical fashion here, I think, would be very limited, just due to the fact you've got a home sitting there right now, you know what I mean? And so there would be some significant moving around, and I'm assuming there's some septic issues that would be involved in that. I think what the applicant has indicated is do a group development, which will allow you to put two homes on one lot without subdivision. You could do that as well, too.
Commissioner Patel, anything else?
Oh, no, thank you.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
So, Ross, so is the, the plan called for farmland?
Correct.
Right. So those A1s that you have, you can go back to the, to the map.
Okay.
Those A1s, they're large tracts of land that you can actually do kind of farmland on. This is a .92 acre. I mean, I guess basically you could have a small little farm, but you can't have a farm on, it's kind of difficult, in terms of what we were looking at for what we call farmland in A1. And A1 is like an acre, put a house on an acre lot, right?
For the most part, yeah.
And so it's a .92. So in terms of the applicant, it's just, in terms of, you got the RR40, A, RR40A, the RR40, which are still, that RR40 is a large tract of land. This one little piece, and then it's got one, two, three, four pieces right behind it, they're all about the same size.
More or less.
Owned by different people.
Correct.
So they're not going to be farmland, they're not going to be A1 farmland kind of, kind of property. So for this one little piece of property, is just to be able to put two mobile homes on it, probably to have your family out there, I guess, I don't know, but it doesn't seem to be out of character. I mean, we just did another one where it was completely out of character, where we changed the map, and you come here and say, "This is just not compatible for 1.92 acres", just doesn't seem consistent to me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, other questions before we, any other questions? We've already had the public hearing. Or no, excuse me, we've not. Before we move to the public hearing, any other questions? If not, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have one speaker, Ed Clement.
I'm Edward Clement. I own 1708 Smoky Canyon Drive. Thank you, guys, for all being here tonight again. The purpose we're trying to do here, is like Commissioner Adams said, we're just under an acre. We are, and we've had this thing perk-tested, so it is more than adequate to hold two septic tanks. We are just trying to build a stick home, not another mobile home by any stretch. And although it didn't get the information, I know it's on the plate, on the, on the frame, I didn't realize I even spoke to speak to anybody at that point, but I can get that. I know it's well beyond a 76. We're just trying to go ahead and get the mobile home put back, and like, like the gentleman says, 2,000 square foot for an RR. I got 76 feet bigger than that, to build a new, a new home, facing an angle on a corner, which my neighbors all said, "This would be such a delight to come in there and see it with a stone bottom and all, board and bat vinyl, and a nice home, wood burning fireplace." We have worked and worked and worked, you could hardly walk through that property when I got there two years ago. And I have probably got split 25 cords of wood this year, just to make it, to get it to where we're trying to get to, where we can accomplish this, and have the mobile home, and then be able to live there, as we really don't have no place to go. We're getting older, and this is going to be our last home. And we're just trying to figure out how to get this done in some fashion that we can afford. And I, look, thank you, guys, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, that was the only speaker, correct?
There are no more speakers.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any other questions or discussion? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Well, I don't really have any discussion. I do hope that we approve this. I understand that both of those denied it, but I think that for these individuals who are just trying to move to a house in .92 acres, I hope this Board sees fit to approve this rezoning request.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of ZON-25-0032, although the planning and inspections staff and the planning board both voted to deny this request, on behalf of the board, I would like to move that we approve the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District. The Board finds that the request is consistent with the South Central Land Use Plan, which calls for farmland at this location. The Board also finds that the request is reasonable in the end of public interest, and is compatible to, or in harmony with, the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Second, we have a motion to approve the rezoning request from A1 to RR Rural Residential District. It's been properly seconded. Any discussions or comments on the motion? Hearing done, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
We will go ahead and move to item four, items of business, and we'll move to the new item A, consideration of First Amendment to the Agreement for Inmate Healthcare Services by WellPath LLC. County Manager Greer, you're recognized.
Yes, I'll be presenting this item. This is the inmate health contract with WellPath. We initially approved the scope of the, of the contract on July 16 during our break. This is the formal contract, the total amount being approximately $5.3 million. It's an increase of about 2.7%, in line with CPI, and I answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, questions on this item? No questions from Commissioners, I'm going to have to chase down Commissioner Patel, but he's all right. We still have a call. We'll give him one moment. I won't send the sheriff after a minute. Too soon.
Got to give him a minute now. Thank you. Here he comes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion on the item by Sherwin Jones, you're recognized.
Yes, a motion to move to approve the requested changes to the Public Health Billing Manual to, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. I got it. Motion to, yeah, motion, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for the Inmate Healthcare Services by WellPath LLC?
Second, we have a motion to approve the Amendment to the Agreement for Inmate Healthcare Services by WellPath LLC. It's been seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing done, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Go ahead and move to item B, from the, that was pulled from the consent agenda, approval of update to personnel policy 7.10, 8.4, and 8.5. County Manager Greer, you're recognized.
Yes, these are, policies were approved as part of the budget. The school participation lead, we expanded school participation lead to allow employees to participate in community involvement programs to serve the communities. The tuition assistance will increase the amount that employees are eligible for and reimburse. And then when, Section 8.5, the reimbursement policy, will actually provide different options or financial options for employees for the tuition assistance program. And I answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, are there any questions on this item? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Yes, and I'll take, I don't have any, any issue with what's in the policy. I would like to add, though, is that, and if we do the motion to change it just a little bit, we've got a lot of employees, and I will tell you that all of them don't necessarily need an undergraduate or the graduate degree. There are a lot of certifications out there that are done at universities that are just or more in line with the jobs that they do for us. So I would ask that we also do a third category of those who seek to have certifications, either from state, Methodist, federal tech, especially those people in IT. What they would tell you is really no reason to even get an undergraduate degree in IT. They'd rather you do English, because by the time you start as a freshman, by the time you get to a senior, everything's changed anyway, and they, Microsoft and all of those, Amazon, all of them would rather you have some of those certificates. So I would ask that we do reimbursement for certificates at amount about $250 to $1,000. And that just, that's everybody, because everybody in, as employees, may not necessarily want to go for a four-year undergraduate or graduate degree, but it gives them the opportunity to be able to be a part of that, too. So I would ask the Board to consider that.
Vice Sherwin Jones, you're recognized. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With what Commissioner?
Adams.
Adams is, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
Commissioner Adams is saying, would we then include that amount, and for how many? I know you were saying, I heard the amount that you were saying, $250 to $1,000, but are we going to put a total amount to say that we're going to be awarding, I don't know, 20 or 30? And if so, would that change the other amount, if that adendum is made? See what I'm saying? Would we have to change the amount that you're proposing, in regards to being able to make that accommodation, that adjustment is what I guess?
Is the question, do we need to change the budget amount for this line item?
Yes.
No, no, we would just add this in, but we would monitor it and make sure that we didn't go over budget for the whole line item. And then if there was a, I would say, an increase in, or the increase in demand for both this and along with the certifications, then we would bring that back in the next budget and ask for a budget amendment afterwards.
Thank you.
And just as a point of clarification, County Manager, in that, if it's $250 to $1,000, there's multiple certifications that you can get, or multiple, so you could have multiple, so up, that would be the cap of all the ones you'd receive.
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you, that's what I was trying to figure out, in reference to the different categories he was discussing, that you could get a certificate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was my question, just around the annual limit, so I think I've been satisfied. I yield back, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized for a motion.
Now you got me to motion. I recommend the staff of the approval of the updated personnel policies, including the certificates under the tuition for $250 to $1,000, which falls up under that tuition reimbursement, along with the rest of the policies, Mr. Chairman.
Second motion. 8.4.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the update to the personnel policy. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing done, I will ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item five. There are no nominations. We'll move to item six. There are no appointments. At this time, I'll go ahead and recess the Board of Commissioners meeting. I will convene the Grays Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting. Item seven, or item one of the, of the Grays Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting, approval of asset management plans for water and sewer districts. County Manager Greer.
Yes, these were, and for all of the other water districts, the approval of the asset management plans were part of the consent agenda and approved by the Board. And these are just going through, trying to assess our assets, water, infrastructure assets, for each district.
Are there any questions, Commissioners, on this item? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve the asset management plans, including the 10-year capital improvement plans for the Kelly Hills, Norcrest, Overhills Park, and Grays Creek Water and Sewer Districts.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that you can include all of them in there, because they are separate water districts. You're going to have to do Kelly Hills and convene it and, and not do that, so you can do the Grays Creek?
Commissioners, we got it. Thank you.
I'll amend my motion just for the Grays Creek.
Yes. We have a motion to approve the asset management plan for Grays Creek. It's been properly seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing done, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we'll go ahead and adjourn the Grays Creek Water and Sewer District Governing Board, and we'll convene the Kelly Hills Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting. Our first item of business is approval of utility services agreement for Kelly Hills, Slocum Road Water and Sewer District. County Manager Greer.
Yes, I received a request from Slocum and Bethune LLC to connect the face, retail space in the Kelly Hills Slocum Road Water Sewer District. The project has approved prior in the Infrastructure Committee, and you approved this as a consent item also. And I answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on this item, Commissioners? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we move to approve the utility service agreement for the Kelly Hills Slocum Road Water and Sewer District.
Second. We have a motion to approve the utility service agreement. It's been properly seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing done, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item B, approval of asset management plan for the Water and Sewer District. County Manager Greer, you're recognized.
Again, this is also an asset management plan or overview, to find out, assess our infrastructure assets in the Kelly Hills Water and Sewer District.
Any questions on this item, Commissioners? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve the asset management plan, including the 10-year capital improvement plan for the Kelly Hills Water and Sewer District.
Second motion. We have a motion to approve the asset management plan for Kelly Hills. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing done, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
At this time, I'll adjourn the Kelly Hills Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting, and I'll convene the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting. Our first item of business is the approval of asset management plans for the Water and Sewer Districts. County Manager Greer, you're recognized.
Not to be redundant, but we're doing the same thing again for Norcrest Water and Sewer District, as, doing an assessment of the infrastructure assets, and the 10-year capital improvements plan.
Commissioners, are there questions on this item? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve the asset management plan, including the 10-year capital improvement plan for the Norcrest Water and Sewer District.
Second. We have a motion to approve the asset management plan and capital plan for Norcrest Water and Sewer Districts. It's been properly seconded. Any questions or comments on this motion? Hearing done, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
At this time, I'll adjourn the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board, and I'll convene the Overhills Park Water and Sewer District Governing Board meeting. Our first item of business is approval of the asset management plan for Water and Sewer Districts. County Manager Greer.
Yes, also with Overhills Park, we want to do the same thing, assess our infrastructure assets for Water and Sewer, for the Overhills War Park Water and Sewer District. Can I answer any questions you may have?
Commissioners, any questions on this item? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move to approve the asset management plan, including the 10-year capital improvement plan for the Overhills Park Water and Sewer District.
Second. We have a motion to approve the asset management plan and the 10-year CAP, CIP, for Overhills Park and Water and Sewer Districts. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing done, I'll, I will ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
At this time, I'll adjourn the Overhills Park Water and Sewer District Governing Board, and I'll reconvene the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting. Item 11, we'll move, is closed session. Vice Sherwin Jones, you're recognized for a motion.
Yes, I make a motion that we move to go into closed session for returning client privilege pursuant to real estate acquisition pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A5, economic development pursuant to, that is what our motion to go into closed session will be for at this time.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
We have a motion to go into closed session for real property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A5. It's been seconded. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing done, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we're in closed session.